That's my whole career.
That's when I go, I go out.
All right, it's six o'clock, we'll get started with our monthly City Commission meeting, and at this time, I called Mandy Dorr and asked Delores if she would delete the pledge, and for Robert if he would do their invitations.
Please stand.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear everybody, come be a signal or something for this blessed day. Thank you for your protection, and your service to this day. How do we ask, now as we go into this meeting, the city business discussed here is official to all residents concerned, all members. I wish pray this meeting go well. Take and watch over us to leave this place, go back home with our family, pray your son Jesus.
Amen. Thank you very much. Roll call, please ma'am.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Blankenship?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
And Ms. Granbury?
Not present.
Okay.
Mayor, you might want to acknowledge us for the video in the minutes that we're following.
As we are, everybody's trying to stay as distant like we're supposed to do, and thanks everybody for coming tonight. All right, number four, approval correction of minutes from prior meetings, and again, these are from the study session as well as regular meetings, so there was no meeting.
We did not have a study session in April.
Correct. So we just need minutes approved from a regular meeting on April 21st. Andrew, everybody's had a chance to review? I've read them already.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, awards, presentations, appointments?
We have none.
Okay. Just for everybody's information, I ran into Dr. Drinkwine and Dr. Jackson yesterday afternoon, and for those of you that may not know, all three campuses as well as these grades, I recognize as being STEM certified in the state of Tennessee. It was only one of six schools in the state that even be recognized, and the only one in the state to have all 12 recognized. We're, Kate and I have discussed, I think we're around August when they get ready to go back to school. That's when we're going to have a little more recognition. I've just not been overly pleased with the amount of...
But what's...
The least they got, because in my mind, that's huge. I think that's huge for what this community can be in the next 20 years. Right there, so we'll just kind of be able to watch out for that.
In addition to that, on Mayor's, the principal at the elementary school was nominated for recognition as principal of the outstanding state.
Yeah, here, here in the state. So they said that would make sure she was here as well when we did that, so. Anybody got anything else on that? Just wanted to give you a heads up that it's coming. Number six, completion review of any unfinished business?
There's not anything, Mayor.
None. Monthly report from Mayor, I'm going to think a little bit when we get towards the end about our budget for 2021, and that's where I'll reserve my time tonight. Monthly financial budget report. Ms. Loretta?
You know, April is, we're winding down the year. We did stop, so we put kind of a, not a spending freeze, but definitely a spending slowdown toward the end of the year. We've already closed off the purchase orders for the end of the year, and we think we're going to wind up in pretty good shape for the end of the year. Our balance, our cash balances remain steady, and at this point in time, we collected 78.6% of total revenues, and our gas revenue is down. We think that's not so much COVID as weather related. We did not have a very cold winter, and then now that the COVID has come along behind that, there's, there's people, plants shut down, so our gas usage is way down. And of course, with that goes the purchases of gas is also way down proportionally. Right like they were, when I looked at the proportion, at the percentages, the difference was like 1.8% difference between how much revenue went down versus how much the gas purchases went down. So they, they correlated very well. So that helps us keep a steady cash flow, although certainly not where we were on 50 in the year. Beyond that, we have, of course, instituted in our utilities, we did not add penalties or charge disconnect fees or cut anybody off for the month of March and April, and I'm sorry, I said March and April, should have been April and May.
Correct.
And the, we will resume that in June. Our plan is that those customers that were already seriously delinquent in, when we ended the month of March, we will actually give them an opportunity to set up something. That has to be done by June the 10th, and then if they do not fulfill those requirements, then we'll have one cutoff for those customers, and then we'll have, resume our normal cutoff at the end of June, the 26th or thereabout.
The power system's doing it for the practice, too?
Do you have a number, Loretta, just out of curiosity?
Yes, there was 25 of the seriously delinquent.
25?
Those are the ones that already were delinquent before March 24, before all this happened.
Correct.
They were already in trouble. Then we only had eight, I sent letters out to last, last week, that were current as of the end of March, but had not paid April and May bills. So we felt that was a pretty good number that we only had.
Some of that, some of the 25.
No.
Yep.
No, the 25 are the seriously ones, seriously ones. They were already, they were already seriously behind. These eight are the ones that were not behind, and that once this hit, may have found themselves without a job, or for whatever reason, or having some issues. We have had no one, no come in and request a, to do, to go on the six-month payback at this point. We've had several of those eight come in and pay already. She didn't have a number for me this afternoon when I asked, but she was giving me that number as well. So we think that before the end of May, that, because those are the ones that I'm most concerned about, those that were good paying customers, and then just, just may have been going through some temporary setbacks.
Do you believe I've had numbers?
No, it's not.
I don't think.
I was trying to be honest.
I was too. Yeah, I think we're all, we're expecting it to be a much larger number.
Yeah, but I think people took, I think quite a few number of people probably took, this is just my guess, so you can take this to what it's worth, but I think a lot of them may have taken their money, their stimulus money, and have, have paid their bills with it, which was, which is great, come in, a lot of, especially knowing how many people were out of, out of work.
Yep.
Okay, any questions for Loretta? Being done, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the monthly report.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please let the minutes reflect it. Commissioner Granbury is here. Number nine, monthly report from City Manager?
Mayor and Commissioners, we are not doing the State of the City again for June. We just, there's just not enough to put out, so we hope we have a real big addition for July, just wanted you to be aware of that. And I think most of it's been said, or you're aware of, we did open City Hall to the public on Monday, and you can see that we've got spots for people to stand, and we're practicing all the right rules, and we're just kind of following CDC. Our biggest concern next is we have a lot of reservations at the community center, and what we're going to be able to allow come June, graduations, weddings, and things like that, and we're going to have to follow the CDC guidelines whenever they do come out, so you'll just hear more about that in the days to come. But otherwise, we really have sat down as a group, the leadership team, I don't feel like there's any services we haven't provided during this time. If you needed a building permit, you were able to get it, anything you were able to do, might have had to wait for us to come outside and talk to you, but I think everything's been okay, so we'll continue to keep that up.
Good, is that all you got, Kate?
Yes, sir.
All right, number 10, special reports from other city departments and committees. Waste water liaison?
Just want to point out, the barge report is in your packet, we did go over that on Thursday at the study session, you can just see that we're moving along. The next big project that we're going to be, we've already bid out, the headworks of the waste water plant, the next big project will be the trunk line along Main Street, and as soon as it does get approved by USDA and CDBG, that will be let out for bid. So that'll be more work that you will see going on. And that's it for that, and there is not a gas.
No gas report.
Okay.
And for everybody's information, we actually have equipment sitting on the ground at Sui Place. It's been, boy.
At least four years.
Three years, at least.
Well, I think the city went under the first order in 92.
Oh, yeah, as far as problems with the state.
Thank the Lord, we finally got something on the ground. All right, number 11, new business. A, ordinance 2050-2020-1050. It's a first reading, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, as set forth in Title 12, Chapter 1, regarding an update to current codes.
Mayor and Commissioners, this and several behind it will talk about, the state has updated their building code to the 2018 edition, and we're going to follow suit with that. This first one that you're looking at, A, is the building code, and we're recommending that we follow suit with the state, and this is a first reading, so there is a public hearing if anybody wants to come in and speak towards it.
Okay. Anyone care to speak?
We will put it on social media, so that if there's anybody out there builder wise or anything else that wants to come in.
I think they're probably pleased we're adopting 2018, it gets us in line with all the rest of the communities in this part of the world. Please let the minutes reflect, no one offered to speak. With that, I'll entertain a motion, if we approve the first reading.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance 2020-1050 as presented.
Have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. B, ordinance 2020-1051, again, this is a first reading, ordinance amending Title 9 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code by adding a chapter 7 regarding mobile food vending, and by specifically exempting mobile food vending from Title 9, Chapter 2, Section 2-202.
Mayor and Commissioners, we talked about this a bit at the study session, you had a two-page summary that kind of outlines what the ordinance accomplishes, and one thing that did come up was the concern of, you know, hurting brick and mortar restaurants from their business. Keep in mind, right now, without this, any food truck can show up, we have nothing to regulate it, we have nothing to permit it, except for things like a one-day special permit. So this is just saying, if you do decide that you want to have a food truck, we're going to permit you, it's going to be a safe operation, it'll be inspected by our building inspector and by the fire code inspector, so it's, it's not going to be taking away any business from any brick and mortar restaurants. They already can be here now.
Yeah.
I just want to make, and there's questions about that, I'm happy to answer that, but that was a good concern I heard brought up, and I just wanted to address that.
Yeah, there was quite a, just for everybody's information, at the study session, there was some concern, and there was a bit of discussion about it, and I think we all felt good about where we were with, so.
Yeah.
Understanding this is a, again, this is a first reading of the ordinance, would anybody like to speak towards this? Please let the minutes reflect, no one did, and with that, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept ordinance 2020-1051 as presented.
Okay, have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion, and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. C, ordinance 2020-1052, again, this is a first reading, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, as set forth in Title 7, Chapter 2, regarding an update to current fire codes.
Mayor and Commissioners, this goes back to what we talked about a couple ordinances ago, we are updating the fire codes of 2018, following the state to do that. And that's what this ordinance is about, and it is first reading, there'll be a public hearing next month.
Philip, anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. Anybody in the audience like to speak towards this? Let the minutes reflect, no one did, please. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept ordinance 2020-1052 as presented.
We have a motion, we have, we got, I heard a second. All those in favor?
Was that Delores or Mike?
Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, D, ordinance 2020-1053, again, this is a first reading, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, as set forth in Title 19, Chapter 4, regarding an update to current gas codes.
This is, again, the same where the state's adopted the 2018 gas code, and we are following suit and adopting that code.
Good. Would you like to speak on it, Commissioner? Anybody in the audience care to speak towards this? Please let the minutes reflect, no one spoke. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we accept ordinance 1053 as presented.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E, ordinance 2020-1054, again, this is a first reading, an ordinance to amend, ordinance 2019-1037, said ordinance appropriated revenues and expenses of operating and maintaining departmental functions of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, for the year beginning July the 1st of 2019, and ending June 30th of 2020, providing an effective...
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the final budget amendment for the year, final and second, and it's just cleaning up so that when we end our fiscal year in June, everything will be okay. Honestly, most of this is moving items around within light items, which we don't necessarily need to bring to you, but we typically do anyway.
Yeah.
The only thing that's outside the norm is that, we mentioned at the study session, the pictometry that's in water and sewer, and it's about $18,000, that was supposed to have been done the last fiscal year, but we got too far into spring and trees, and we couldn't get the pictometry, but we share that cost with Murray County, Spring Hill, and Columbia as well.
Okay.
It may change between now and second reading, but that's all that's in there now.
I think the one thing I'd like for everybody to take away from this is, I remember when I came on the commission, we're doing budget changes every month.
Oh, yeah.
And we've done two for the year, and that's going to take care of it.
Typically, at the end of, at the end of the calendar year and at the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, we don't have them. So I want to compliment Loretta and staff, for I mean, we're getting a better budget every year, so thank you. All right, understanding, again, this is a first reading, does anyone in the audience care to speak? Please let the minutes reflect, no one did. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the budget amendment 1054 as presented.
Have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F, ordinance 2020-1055, again, this is a first reading, an ordinance to the city, of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and the tax rate for the year beginning July the 1st, 2020, and ending June the 30th of 2021.
So Mayor and Commissioners, this is the budget ordinance for the next fiscal year. We discussed it a bit at length at the study session on Thursday, we highlighted the changes that were in there. We are happy to address questions, and Loretta and I look at this as a work in progress, and can absolutely change between now and second reading with feedback that we get, but we've got to get, legally has to be passed by June 30th of this month, of next month.
Correct. I can tell you, and I think each of the Commissioners were here at the study session, I went through it with a five-tooth comb, probably more deep than I ever have, just simply because of the fact that there are so much uncertainty as to what's going to be the rest of this year's going to look like, particularly regarding sales tax and other things, just due to the pandemic, and the fact that we didn't have people shopping, again, we didn't have people using gas because of a lot of things, so there is, it's a good budget, I can tell you that, but I do want everybody to understand, there's just a whole lot of uncertainty into what we've got, but I feel like we're good, we were very conservative, we didn't go out on limbs thinking that, oh, well, this is going to come back, and it's going to be the greatest thing in the world. We tried to keep conservative edge to it. We're going to have some expenditures this year that are going to be more unusual and larger amounts than we've ever seen in this community, and that's a good thing, because it's all related to the sewer rehab project. Along with, as we start moving forward, hopefully within this 2021 budget year, maybe we'll start seeing some work done downtown. So please understand, it's a larger budget than this community's ever seen, but the money's there.
A lot of it is the extra, the current money.
And we've already got it. And we're being very meticulous to make sure that we get the full grant of 2.2, 2.3 billion that was given to us by the USDA through their, of their sewer rehab, so if you get a look at it, you got any questions, again, Kate or Loretta or myself will be more than happy to answer any questions with you. But again, I want to compliment Loretta and her group for the work that was done upfront on it, it is lots and lots of pages, and we need to be...
Next, Mike, question.
Mike, what you got there?
I thought about this over the weekend, and where I'm coming from, I can't help it, but I'm still, you know, I just think it's a shame that us, as a city government, and our employees, you know, the 17 employees, I'm talking about, makes under $15 an hour. I'm just, you know, I don't think it's right, because we have the money, and we've had the money in the past, but it's like, those people, it's almost like you look on them like, well, they, they don't do nothing, you know, the educational people maybe would do, or whatever, and that's, that's not right. These people have to make a living just like you or me, and we can find money along the way to do other things that we want to do, but for some reason, we can't find money for this, and I, and this here's just the first reading, and, you know, and I'm just going to have to go now, you know, and I, you know.
And Mayor, I prepared a, an email that addresses the positions that are under $15 an hour, and, and why, and why they haven't been moved, and I'll send it out to all of you between now and second reading.
I understand that, Kate, but it, there's no reason for them people not to make $15 an hour, I'm sorry, but that, I mean, that's just...
But I don't know if you know the reasons for all of them.
Well...
So you've got certain department heads that absolutely don't want them to make more because they work 2,800 hours a year, so they're starting pay at $36,000 because they work more hours, that's one type of...
Say that again now.
Firefighters work 2,800 hours.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, let me, let me back up, Kate. I am not talking about firefighters.
They're in that group, though.
They, no, 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 those firefighters are part-time, for the record.
No, they're full-time.
If they're full-time, they deserve it. If they're full-time, farming, they deserve it.
Well, I'll, I'll, I will send an email to all of you that explains that, other departments, pay increases come with certifications, and employees choose not to get those certifications, so I'd have a difficult time giving an employee that didn't get the certification the same money that the employee that went out and got the certification.
You should, you should not hold that against an employee.
They don't get certified?
You should, what I'm saying is, for $15 an hour, you should not hold back an employee from making that. You, you, we shouldn't do it, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll send it all, I respect that, and I'll send that, my little research that I did on it, I'll send it to all of you, and then between now and second reading, we can discuss that.
I have a question. The employees that make the 1250 an hour, they're still getting benefits, are they full-time employees, we're talking about, so they're still eligible for benefits and retire?
Everybody else is eligible.
Okay, so they're still getting benefits with that?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Philip, when I looked at that group?
I said, I think they have to.
And Philip, when I looked at that group, firemen, and it going to cost us, how much this year?
If you want to move to $15 an hour, start paying for fire relief, $42,127 a year.
That's kind of just everybody's pay in the entire department.
Right.
So they're, they're starting pay at...
And so, if we started looking at that number, we're going to escalate, just for the fire department, when it's 60-something thousand in one year.
I didn't look at the code.
I just remember it's a problem, and it's a big number.
So our full, our full-time firefighters, some of them are not making $15 an hour.
No, sir, my captains are making 15 an hour, which is basically $42,000 a year. I'm starting firefighters with certifications at 1250 hours, which is $36,000 a year because of the hours.
But that's what, I mean, how many do you have right now, Philip, that's not, that's full-time employees that's not making $15 an hour?
All of them except for my three captains. My captains are only 15 hours.
But they're working 2,800 hours a year, they're paid to sleep, and that's all part of packages.
I mean, that's just, I mean, we can't have that, I mean, that's what they're, that's what they're...
Well, we have a really competitive pay in the fire department, and you don't have to scrunch up employees.
Well, I understand that, I mean, I know they have a lot of...
How many of the 17, or, how many of the, Michael said there were 17?
I have all of that, and I was prepared to bring it tonight, but I...
Okay, so we can look at that, how many of those 17 are firefighters?
I have a list, I have a list of what I've got, if you want it.
Okay, yeah, would you send, just send it to me, Mike. I mean, how many of our firefighters?
Let's do this, Mike, if you don't mind, let's list, number one, let's list, Kate, get that list out to everybody first.
I'd rather employees' names and salaries.
Uh, that's where I, I...
I'd rather just see positions, I don't care about...
That's actually the...
It wouldn't matter to me what the name was, because I wouldn't know what they did unless I knew them.
So let's, let's, let's go ahead, that way we don't have to worry about getting any information out.
Okay. I will get that email out to you, and then we can talk about it further between now and second reading.
And again, if you've got questions, I'll, Loretta, Kate, or myself, I'll take them.
I have another question about the budget, because I know you had answers on, I agree with Loretta next time, I appreciate you making the copy, but I didn't have all, all your answers from Loretta, but one of them, was there any, when does healthcare insurance go up, is that reflected in our...
What we did was assume 15%.
Okay, I thought we had given the answer, I didn't remember.
Our timing in our, our, our health insurance is difficult, because they pass the budget, and then we find out later.
Yeah, I did, typically, and I didn't remember what we said last time, I just didn't remember.
The really bad part about our timing on our health insurance is that it hasn't all the first renewal date, but we don't have, when we're preparing the budget, we don't have even the preliminary...
Yeah, yeah.
And it, it usually involves a phone call of, well, about how much do you think it's going to go up this year?
Yeah, we don't have it in our school.
And frankly, they don't.
No, they don't. And then...
Houston, you're in your whole year.
Yeah.
We're down to 15%, I mean, that was, that's kind of what's been the average over the last couple of years.
And last year, we didn't go up at all because we fixed the thickness.
Yeah, that's right.
No, we didn't, we didn't. I just didn't remember what we said, I remember giving us the answer, but I didn't remember. Okay, thank you.
If I asked you that question, some budget?
Want to do a roll call on that, ma'am?
Yeah, thank you, absolutely. First reading?
Anybody have any questions?
First reading. Anybody in the audience care to speak towards our budget? Please let the minutes reflect, no one offered? Roll call, please.
Ms. Granbury? Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Blankenship?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
That's four, oh, four to one, as you carry.
Thank you very much. All right, G, ordinance 2020-1056, again, this is a first reading, an ordinance amending portions of Title 7 of the city of Mount Pleasant Municipal Code relating to fire protection.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is amending, it's kind of a cleanup to our municipal code regarding fire, where we continually refer in the code to fire men, not necessarily always men, there's always, there's also language in there about mutual aid, where we have automatic aid, it kind of ties, Philip...
It, it kinda ties Phillip into nursing homes, which we have no control over. Nor do we have control over the schools, it's something that the city can't address. So, we're just cleaning up that, that language. Anything you wanna add to that, Corey?
No, it just changes the universal term requirement of firefighter. It eliminates the life safety code.
Which is the nursing homes and the schools, yes.
And then, it, uh, the way it was written before, it didn't, it wasn't clear that the city could enter into mutual aid agreement.
Automatic aid.
What is it?
Automatic aid.
Automatic aid. So, we just added an extra word in there to make sure that, um, the agreement that the city has with Columbia and Murray County would be.
We've had that for a couple of years.
Again, the ordinance that we announced, it is authority to execute the order that you support for us to do that.
Okay, we're just cleaning it up. Because I think that's been probably one of the best things that we've done mutually with the city of Cleveland. For those of you who don't know, if we have a fire down here, like, I'll use Landmark Tower, for instance, the city of Cleveland will show up with one of their fire trucks, uh, just as a mutual aid. And then, if we have anything as far as over the central.
South of Columbia, San Fores, Berthoud area.
Food line. Food line. We'll respond to anything they have. Now, it's not an automobile accident, so, I mean, it is what it, it's gotta, it's gotta be a fire. Something gotta be burning, so to speak. But, I think that, you know, that's how you make things work, communicate.
It works really well.
It's worked well, very, very well. All right, that being the first reading, again, would anybody in the audience like to speak? Please let the minutes reflect, the number one wanted to. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve, uh, twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-nine resolution.
It's, but it's, um.
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-four, twenty, yeah.
Ten fifty-six.
Dash ten, yeah.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. H. Finally, the resolutions. Resolution twenty-twenty-nine, a resolution approving the interlocal agreement between Murray County and the City of Mount Pleasant to redistribute sales tax increase.
Mayor Commissioners, we've discussed this at length, actually, the last couple of study sessions. The tax referendum did pass, it became effective May first. And if we do nothing, half of the increase goes to the Murray County schools and half of it goes to the City of Mount Pleasant. By passing this resolution, half of it goes to, all of it goes to the Murray County schools. And there's been discussion on what Columbia's doing and what Spring Hill's doing. But, that's kind of, the resolution in front of you sends for one year, um, all of the tax to the Murray County schools.
Uh, I'll look at this very closely because I supported this because I think the schools are one of the most important things we have in this community. As I said earlier, it's the future. And I publicly came out in support of this. Some other communities may choose not to and they publicly came out in support of it. If they choose not to do what they said they would do, that's their decision. Uh, but I can tell you that this year, it's gonna be about thirty-one thousand three hundred and eighty dollars that we're gonna be sending to the schools. If it were gonna be a much, much bigger number. And the reason it's small as it is this year is the fact that once the referendum passed, then the tax didn't pick up until.
May first.
Was it May first? Yeah. So, we're certainly gonna look at it again next year and that's the reason why we're limiting this to just one year. So, we can go back and get a look and say, all right, what do we really wanna do? Because I think, I know in my mind probably what will happen, but I don't know that. So, just to let everybody know what the dollar number is and why we chose to do it that way. Just believe you stick to your word.
I agree with that.
Corey, you have anything to add that I've missed?
Uh, my only comment is that it's a, a year agreement. So, this would be addressed again next year.
That's correct.
At this time.
At budget time.
Yeah, at the same, it's a year from the execution of that agreement.
Yeah, but I'm looking at budget.
Okay, gotcha.
But, it may have next year, basically.
I mean, we're, we're gonna be looking at this next year at the same time we're looking at our budget. So, we're gonna have a real number then, what that can be to us.
I agree.
I don't wanna look at it afterwards.
Yeah.
I've had people call in and ask me if the money would go specifically to the Mount Pleasant schools. And the answer to that is no, we can't control the.
It will not, but I can tell you, one of the three schools that is on the target is Mount Pleasant Elementary. McSowell.
Spring Hill.
Spring Hill High School and Mount Pleasant Elementary.
But, you're saying that, that this could change next year, that, that you could vote no or whatever.
We could vote to keep it.
This, you're only committing to one year.
One year.
When we voted for it on the ballot, did it not say that it was for schools?
Yes, it did.
I didn't hear anything about the cities. I, I mean, people voted for schools. So, how do we come in and give it a right to say have schools and have a city?
It was something that the county, I guess, kept to theirself, I guess, that they didn't let it out, I guess.
But, that was not what people voted for.
You're exactly right.
That's not what people voted for.
But, we're doing what the people voted for.
I mean, and I'm in agreement with that.
We're doing board on what they voted for.
I'm not being auctioned because it was the half, so the ki, it was half the school kids' books and stuff like that. And I would not have recommended it if the student was gonna get half, or the student will get all of it, that's why the schools need money.
Yeah, I would.
And that's why, Mayor, I thought about this. And I don't, I don't wanna come back next year and say, no, we're not giving you nothing next year.
We have the right to decide to give them something again next year. It may not have to be half.
I just, I just think, you know, it should just be done and over instead of coming back. That's my opinion.
I mean, I don't only just think it ought to be Mount Pleasant, I think it ought to be with every city. It's not, I think the people need to know.
The referendum.
You voted for something that they're not ensuring.
The ballot went out that half of it would go to the schools. Everybody voted, the ballot passed. And what we're doing is, we're giving all of ours to the schools instead of keeping half of ourselves. For this year, Spring Hill's giving it for three years to match what Williamson County.
They haven't voted on that yet.
Well, that's what they're proposing, yes, that's what they're proposing.
Because they've done it already in Williamson County, yeah.
And to match what Williamson.
I'd just rather have a motion for all three years instead of doing it for the year. Because we're, we are changing our mind next year. So, I mean, what would keep us from changing our mind this year?
I'm sorry, but I can't, I can't go along with that. I think that we, that the money that this could be, Mike, is we need to just pause and we're, we're doing it at a time next year that we can look at our own budget and we're not doing it way before it, so we don't know what the number would be and we're not doing it afterwards.
Thirty-one thousand dollars is a lot for the city, I know that.
But, Mike, we, we wouldn't be changing what the ballot said, we're doing.
You will be next year to decide.
No, 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 we're doing different, we're giving them more than we voted. We voted to, correct me if I'm wrong, but we voted as voters, when I went and voted, I voted for half of it to go to the schools.
That's correct.
That's what the ballot said, half of this tax money would go to the schools. We are, as commissioners, right now, voting to give all of it to the schools.
I thought it was all going to the schools.
No, half of it was going to the schools.
Not the way the referendum was worded.
The referendum was worded that half of the.
The way it was written or the way it was told in the very beginning.
The way it was written.
That we voted, half of it. No, it was always said that half of it was going to the schools. The new tax thing was going.
Well, why was Columbia, you know, gonna give it all and.
Look, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try to answer that question.
I don't expect it, but I'm just saying, you know.
Because the number one person that stood up and said, that's what they were gonna do with it, is not doing it. Okay? We're gonna be a people of our word in this community because we all came out in, in favor of this.
That's why we should do it for all.
And then, all I'm asking is, is what this resolution calls is, is we're gonna look at it.
We're doing, we're doing what we said we're going to do. We're giving half.
For this year.
And that's the first year.
That's correct.
And now, we're giving, and we're giving more. It's a permanent tax. It's a permanent tax.
It's a permanent, we're adding to it.
It's a permanent tax and we're adding to it. We're adding thirty-one thousand to it, is what we're doing. We're saying, we think they should get more. But, we're only doing it for a year because we don't know if we can afford to do it next year.
All right. Any other comment, any other conversation? It's healthy. Really, it's healthy. All right, entertain a motion for Resolution twenty-twenty-nine.
I make a motion that we approve, twenty-twenty-nine, with the, as presented, amended to, for the one, one year.
Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Aye, Resolution twenty-twenty-ten, a resolution of City of Mount Pleasant Tennessee to authorize the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Loax Designs for preliminary architectural feasibility report for administrative offices and secondary fire hall.
Mayor Commissioners, as we talked about the study session, this is for the two on I Bond Street. The only way we get a slide for grants and low-interest loans for USDA rule development is to have architectural.
Renderings.
Renderings and, uh, the cost is probably gonna be over twenty thousand. This is not a cost that we will incur right now, it'll be paid out of the future, loans and grants, and that's the way it's written in front of you.
And this is not gonna happen overnight, as we've discussed in our.
No, it's gonna be a long process. Even just these renderings, it's gonna be a long process.
So, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for here for Resolution twenty-twenty-ten.
Oh, right.
For Loax Designs for administrative offices and secondary fire hall on Bond Street.
All right, do we have a motion, we have a second?
Ms. Granberry, seconded.
All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty-twenty-eleven, a resolution authorizing the City of Mount Pleasant Tennessee to apply for economic development and administration funding for the downtown revitalization project.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, this is something that the federal government just announced. They've thrown a lot of money into the Economic Development Authority and it's going to be funding things that cities apply for. We may be coming to you in June with another project, if they're gonna fund more than one project. But, this is helping to, um, fund the downtown revitalization project. I've got a meeting tomorrow discussing a booster pump out of Cherry Glen as a possibility too. So, we're just trying to figure out what the terms are, what they prefer to fund in this round. But, they've thrown some money back into the economy and we wanna be first in line to get it.
Absolutely.
Give it what a way like that.
Once it's found out, it's out there, man, it'd be grabbing, like, wow.
They're saying that the deadline's June sixteenth.
Any questions, Kate, on this? Again, it's grant money. Do we, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, we accept Resolution twenty-twenty-eleven as presented.
Have a motion, we have a second? Have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that takes care of the regular order of business. Kate, you got anything you wanna add right quick?
I am good, I think I've said everything I need to say.
All right, cool. All right, we have three names that have asked to speak. I'm gonna have to ask for your address, please, if you do this, because I need those on here to make sure that you are actually a City of Mount Pleasant resident. Robert Norman. Uh, would you please come forward, state your name and I need your address, please.
I'm Robert Norman, seven eight four five Mount Joy Road.
Seven.
Eight four five Mount Joy Road, Mount Pleasant.
It is, okay, good deal. Thank you. Got two minutes.
Okay, I've got a concern about Mount Joy Road being paved from that service station under the bypass bridge. The road is in bad shape and it's tearing the vehicles up and that's all I got on, got on that. But, uh, then I've got the water situation. When it rains like three or four or five inches at one time, next door neighbor, uh, died, Judy Garrett, myself and Rodney Sanders. We get flooded and we have to, we have to get pumps out and pump the water across the road. And another thing I've got is, uh, the speed limit up through there is thirty miles an hour. But, the people don't obey it and we need more police protection out there, you know, to catch the speeders because it's, it's dangerous up through there. And that's about all I've got and then I'll turn it over to the next person.
Okay, can I ask you a quick question? The, the road conditions, is it a lot of potholes, potholes?
Yes, it is, it's tearing all to pieces. Another thing I can bring up.
Take a look at that.
Some of the trailer trucks have come, say, from town and turn on Mount Joy Road and then go up under the bypass and turn right back and come up on the bypass and turn and go towards Columbia instead of going straight through the Augustine Cemetery and then turn on the bypass.
They're doing that, man?
I mean, they're doing, they can just go right straight through and be a whole lot easier on them. See, they, they and they, people getting hurt upon crossing the bypass up there when they turn and go towards Columbia.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're going across the thing instead of going around.
All right, so that's the road on here to make a group, that's a lot of time down.
As the chief, there is one when they're finished.
What about the water, Mayor, what about the water he's talking about? Can it, can a tile and be diverse where it goes?
Another thing I didn't bring up, the, the ditches from a, from a, just on the side of Judy Garrett's house. She lives seven eight four nine and it's another house past hers and then the bypass bridge. If a ditch was cleaned out down through there, it would really help a whole lot if they could, uh, clean the ditches out. I mean, get, get.
So, there's overgrowth in the ditches.
But, it's a gas line goes up through there too. I mean, you're gonna have to get the gas company involved in it too, or whoever does, I mean, I know the city, I do the digging, but they have to watch gas lines.
I don't know who owns that property.
It's their property.
It's the city.
It's their property.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know where you draw the property line. So, we'll have to look at it and see where you put a piece of it out.
I'm gonna tell you what I've had out on both ends. You know, I know the city has a, what, twenty-five road foot road frontage or whatever, where they can, whatever they need to do. But, I've always been told that ditch is mine.
Absolutely, that's what I'm saying. It's just, it's just a property owner.
Pardon?
That's what I've, that's what I've been told, you know, the ditch, you know, it's not, I know Columbia, you know, it's all together different. You know, Columbia, they clean out ditches or whatever, but we don't.
They have a stormwater program in Columbia too.
We don't.
So, it's a private property owns, it's, it's the ownership there. And we don't have a stormwater program here yet.
Yet.
But, it's part of the problem. You know, we had a lot of flooding in the February rains and.
We've had two very, very.
I feel them.
Three February's have been really.
I feel them, people like ditches, you know, the, you know, some, Redwood subdivision, same thing, you know, they flood out, you know, because.
All right, next we have a, now to speak to Judy Garrett. If you would, please, again, state your name and your address, please, ma'am.
Judy Garrett, seventy-eight forty-nine, Mount Joy Road. And I'm here about the same thing. We get flooded almost every time it rains, our whole house, at the back part of our house is. And we have to tear out remodeling and everything. And it's coming like off the bypass down through and so, we've got a ditch that we dug to try to keep some of it off of, but it's done. And then, I think what it needs is like the, uh, tile and we have went down through from the bypass down to Rodney Sanders and where it levels off, then it comes out to the road. But, where our house is and the Norman and then the Ragstills house, it's got like a ditch and it like needs cleaned out and like a tile and or something put in so the water can run through. But, we keep it cleaned out, you know, uh, but it just fills up so much from the trash that people throw is off the bypass, you know, on the side of the roads and then it just fills up and then it stops up the tiles and stuff, so then we get flooded. And, um, so we, every time it rains really bad, the tile and up at the next to the road that comes off the bypass, it stopped up and we've had the city out there to, you know, dig it out, but they hadn't dug it out. And then, so my husband, um, he builds roads, so he went up there and dug kinda like a little trench and stuff. But, it's still, you know, when it rains so much, the water just flows in on us too bad. And so, our, our house, it really gets it almost every time and then the last rain, like Robert said, we had to get the police officers out there to block the road so we could pump it to keep it from going on to the other neighbor's house.
And that happens since you've lived there all the time?
Oh, yeah, we get flooded.
I mean, has it always been or has it just gotten late, like worse since there've been construction on the bypass there?
No, it's been there. No, it's always been there.
And this is in the back of the lot?
Uh, it comes down off the bypass, and then our house, the back part of our house, it's like on a concrete slab.
And I wasn't ignoring you, I was Googling, maybe you'd have found out where it was.
That's okay. And then, uh, so then it comes back and it gets us, and it floods us every time.
And the field behind all those houses still floods too, right?
Yes, ma'am, uh-huh.
Mr. Bill, can I show you some pictures?
Yeah, I've got it right here in middle of the...
He's got photographs.
I was just doing this, I was just trying to make sure I understood where they were.
It gets dug, and, um...
I'll ride out there, take a look at it. Again, my concern is, if, that if it's coming off of forty-three, that's a state power.
No.
We've had, we've had T-dots, we've had, we've had T-dot out there, and, and stuff, and they say, because we're inside the city limits, that they can't do anything.
It's weeds.
Yeah.
Trying to work it out.
But I, I, I think what it needs to be done, and like I said, my husband, he builds roads, he's, he's saying that like if the ti, if the ditches were dug out and like tiles put in, you know, but, I mean, where, some of the tiles are stocked up, and so we went up there and tried to clean those out up next to the bridge, and then we hand dug a ditch, but, you know, we, we can't do that because it's really not on our property, you know.
Well, we'll, I'll be more than happy to ask, it's probably gonna be Kate working with Steve. Or somebody like that, unless Steve, but my main concern is, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you, I think it's private property. And that being the case, we can't enter it. Now, that's not saying we don't need to look at it, and at least give you an answer. So, please, just give us a dare to, and, and I don't mean a dare to.
Whoa.
Let me qualify a dare to.
Sometimes.
Kate, or, if you know, might get with Steve on this, if you could, unless at least, let's give a look at it.
Now, he has, Steve Recker...
We've all been out there before, you know, with...
Yeah, he had, yeah, he's been out there, but, uh, I think the main drain coming off the bridge up there, I think, and I've been up there and sprayed around and cut around and, and tried to clean it out, but it's just so much junk and trash, you know, down in there, and so I don't know what's off down in there, you know. But, um, we've been up there and tried to clean it out and stuff, but we really, really get a lot of water. And like I said, our house, it's been flooded so many times.
How long have you flooded there?
Uh, thirty years. Yeah, we, we thought, you know, that it was the T-dot drain.
It is.
And, and we've had them out there.
They're not gonna take responsibility for it, I'm gonna tell you.
No, they're not. Because, and I told them that our house has been flooded, and the insurance don't pay anything on our house, and we just got through spending seven thousand dollars, tearing it up and stuff, you know, that, it kinda gets old, and we don't have the money, you know what I'm saying, to do it?
We're gonna look at it, that's all I can tell you that we will do, because, again, it gets into private, public properties, what you can and can't do, what you can and can't put on it. You got anything else you'd like to speak on?
No, that's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we have one more, Diane Norman. If you don't mind, please state your name and your address.
Yes, Diane Norman, seven eight four five Mount Joy Road. And I have a question, two questions, so sorry. Number one, are y'all raising taxes out there on our property?
There's no tax increase.
No tax increase.
Okay, now, when my house burnt forty years ago, Charles Dale stood out there on my back porch that was left. He said they moved us in the city limits, and they would provide, take care of us. City has not taken care of any of us out there since that sign moved from that bridge over to where it's at now. We have feeders out there, drag racers, doesn't I, drag racers. Call the law. I mean, we, we have the water problem, if the ditch is our problem, just tell us, tell us, and we'll take care of it.
That's what I intended to do.
Well, I know, but we don't wanna wait three months down the road, when we got people right now.
Maybe it won't be three months.
I've got people right now lined up, will come and help us dig all the way from where we need to dig, all the way down to Max's. We're tired, we're really tired of fighting the city telling one thing, the state telling us one thing, and while we went up there and talked to whoever he was, he told us a whole lot of whatever y'all were saying. So, all three of y'all, none of you are on the same page, but, yeah, we're in city limits. So, we're just fed up, and I mean, first time I've been in this place in forty-five years, so I'm fed up. So, I think we, and y'all, owe us to try to help us solve this problem, because we got the pond, and the canoe on the back when it rains down there, that shouldn't even have happened at all. That's land back there, horses are back there, but it's a pond, we have ducks, we have frogs, but it comes off that bypass. And if y'all would just come out there when we are hitting, like the other night, when we called the law out there, so much traffic through there, we had to get them blocked both in to save her house, and we shouldn't have to do that, not in city limits. We should be, we pay our taxes, we don't cause no problems, but I'm causing problems now. And I just wanna answer, if, if we're responsible, if it's ours, we'll take care of it, we don't need your help. 'Cause we got people already volunteered with equipment, but we just need to know where the gas lines are. And I know where mine's at, 'cause I dug it. So, I do know where my line is. But if we want something done, we're tired. And it's weird, if you can't do nothing, move that little sign like Charles Dale did that night, put it right back down there below it, and, and we'll go back to Redder County, and we'll take care of our own section.
This section was in it?
Yeah, it was.
First time I've heard of any of these problems.
Me too, uh, this is my first experience.
That's what we don't understand, this is the first time I've ever seen any of y'all, I know her.
It was for... But I've never seen you in here before.
I've never been in here, I, I had no problem being in here. And we've been trying to talk to people, we've been finding reason with people, I mean, my whole, and Mr. Kirk, bless his heart, he would've been here tonight, but he's just not able.
But, Ms. Norman, I think, and I'm glad you're here, I think that you're realizing what, what the mayor has told you too, the first time we're here, and the questions we're asking, hopefully you'll get those answers. And I hope, and, and I see the police chief back there, I hope you got an answer when you called, because I've never not, never not gotten an answer from the police department by calling them.
Oh, they're great.
And they came out and did that.
Oh, they came out, just, I mean, when we called, yeah.
To do that, but, uh, and finding out, and I know that's frustrating, because we're, Sonia and I live, we live out on Hoover Mason Lane, and part of it's the county, and part of it's...
One more thing, and I'll leave you alone, one more thing, but I don't understand, it's clockwise. We walk the road, we walk behind stop, but we walk it, it's, it's clockwise. The trailer trucks are unreal coming through there, and I don't even know what they're hauling, I don't know if it's gas or oxygen or where they go, but they'll cut from like in front of Carla's house down there on our road, they can go up the bypass, turn and go across the road, instead of just going around and getting on the bypass and exit going to Columbia. I don't understand all the trailer trucks coming through there, and we're talking about trailer trucks. We're talking about trailer trucks.
Ma'am, Ms. Norman, we're gonna do everything we can.
Yeah, I know, you're fine.
We'll get, look and see, we got our roads.
Okay.
But first of all, this is the first I've heard of this, okay?
Okay.
Number one.
All right, that's just...
Number two, I knew who Charles Dale was, and he was a fine man, okay?
Yeah, he was, I love him.
But I'm gonna say this, I can't tell you that I'm gonna do what he told you he was, he was gonna do forty years ago.
I know, he told you that.
And I'm sorry, I can't, I can't do that.
I just can't do that, okay? Okay, I, I agree, but if you just have, all we want is you know...
Now, look, you're, I've, I've already said I'm gonna do, I'm gonna work with the chief of police, and I'm gonna work with Kate, and with Steve, and we're gonna get you an answer, that's all I promise you.
Well...
And you will have it within fourteen business days.
I agree with you on that.
I take a motion that we adjourn, please.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank y'all.
Thank you very much, do you have a second? All those in favor?
Yes, I, yes, I will.
Oh, I got it, I can give you the chief's, the...
Every night, they were going out, uh, they're going, you're like, so they're... I, and I...
And I give the number, but I'll be fine.
Yeah, it's in that's the name of it. My computer's not working, it keeps going back to saying...
It is, but it's the same thing.
Mine's not working.
You had to dig something, it's taking forty-five minutes.
Well, it never, it would go to a few pages each time, mine is not working.
Took him a few minutes, he...
I'm turning it in.
The Adobe upgrade.
I'm turning mine in.
The Adobe upgrade, it's all good. Let's talk to Haywood.
I'll talk to Haywood. I'm complaining about my computer.